Town of Southbridge, Joint General Government Subcommittee slash Town Council Meeting. Monday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven P M. We're immediately following A H S. In the Veterans Room, we have a quorum, well, call to order in a second, but this is being recorded by video and audio by Southbridge Cable Access. Agenda number one, call to order. Agenda number two is roll call. Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Dow, not here. Counselor Montigny is present. Citizen Member Clemens.
Present.
Present and Citizen Member Kelly, not here. We have a quorum of three out of five. Agenda number three is review, discuss the informational technology director's request to apply for the municipal fiber grant program in order to link town-owned facilities for centralized management of the I T infrastructure and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend to Town Council.
I was going to the internet.
Sorry, so.
Oh, that's great. Second?
I'm second.
Thank you so much, Mr. Manager.
Oh, I forgot it's just us.
It's okay. It's good to see you.
Thank you. So Victor's here today. I'll ask him to come up. As you know, we have the municipal fiber feasibility study that we've been ongoing. This grant opportunity is coming up for us to do some of the work, so. The unfortunate thing is that it's time sensitive for the grant application, so. But we've been working on a whole host of things when it comes to fiber, so. The goal is to improve our infrastructure, and I'll turn it over to Victor, and he can elaborate more on the feasibility study, plus this grant program and how it all ties together.
So, yeah, we began the feasibility study and that, and I just today received a spreadsheet kind of breaking down the initial cost of getting some of the locations, in particular, the fiber for library and fire department and town hall and D P W. Which includes the ARPA funds that library and fire had applied for some time ago, that have been sitting there waiting to be used. But I have extra copies of these. So, the M B I fiber project is for two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And as in the first line of that phase one, the total is three hundred and thirteen thousand. But we have a five percent match for that. And what we're looking to do is get the match from the ARPA funds for connecting library and fire, which would give us the sixty-four thousand, which is more of a twenty percent match in the eyes of that, leaving the two forty-nine and change from the grant if we're awarded that two fifty. That would connect fire, fire has two connections because then we have to have a fiber connection to the tower, which must stay after fiber, I mean, after fire leaves for the new station. And then a temporary connection for the current fire station. And then library, connecting the library, which would leave us a remaining amount of a hundred and thirty-five thousand to use to potentially connect the community center and police and eventually the new fire station. The town hall would be, there's a capital request for the core equipment to replace here separately anyway, so that would cover our connection here.
Okay. There's a lot here.
There's clearly some need for fiber everywhere. So it's just about how you're gonna do it and the best way to do it.
Right, and we're trying to maximize all the grant funded, ARPA funded, that we can possibly use. So the goal was to, I think we had talked last year, oh, actually, I think it was through ARPA, we had gone to ARPA committee last year for two hundred thousand, two, two, two fifty, to upgrade the network equipment here in the town hall. So that would still be a priority for us to that, upgrade the network here. We know that we had the fatal flaw down at the D P W building. And obviously, the library's been the impetus for us to move to this fiber. So again, the goal is at first to connect as many of the town buildings as we can to this fiber computer network.
And I'll add that this potential two fifty that we could get from the state will do the entire build externally to all locations, not just to the first set that we want to bring home live. So initially, that would cover all the outside work to all the locations. And in this feasibility study, we found that and saved, I think, just over a hundred and thirty thousand because it brought to light that we, we, the fire station or the fire department had not fi- old fire lines on the poles that we can reutilize without having to pay for make-ready work, which was a chunk of money. So that was a good fight.
And that make-ready is the space within the telephone pole?
Correct.
So we've had, already had conversations with the National Grid, through our representative through National Grid, that that space is allocated to us. So that's where he's talking about that, where we took off the lines, we have that space already.
Okay, well, if anybody has any questions, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, but we don't have fiber coming into Southbridge. That's the problem, correct?
There, there is fiber on, on, we would have to run fiber, yes. We would have to run our own fiber on those, in that space where the old fire lines are. So we would have to pay for the fiber line if you.
From going to the pole to the building, but coming to the pole, do we have fiber coming into Southbridge? I thought we did not.
No, no, we would have a loop created. We would have to build our fiber lines on, using that pole space.
So in here.
Make a loop.
Going out of town, where, how are we gonna get the fiber coming into the town?
It wouldn't be, it would be on, there's another part of this that I wasn't able to print out yet, but it has a map with a layout for our locations, and we would run fiber to those locations on the poles. In the feasibility study, there is equipment that would allow us to, the new equipment would allow us to expand on that later. But right now, that map is just to the municipal buildings.
So.
We'd have our own network.
Interominable buildings would be able to contact each other through fiber.
Yep, and we would get an I S P to pay, because the fiber lines would connect to an I S P that would then pay, we have to pay for internet, like we do now with Charter or whatever other services, Crown Castle, there are other services that we would utilize.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Well, Mr. Clemens?
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to dissect what he said, because sometimes we get something and there's just something sort of dangling out there that we didn't anticipate, or that somebody might have, some one person anticipated, but the rest of us didn't understand that we should have anticipated. To this, to Counselor Marquetti's point in terms of where this, where the fiber's coming from. Because we all know that, you know, the D O D Center has fiber. Okay, that's great. They have their thing going on. They always have. Just never comes here. And you say, oh, there's another part. How much is the other, so you connect all these buildings and you have this grant to do all this and to get them up and ready and capable of accepting the live ended it. What's the cost to get the line ended it? Or is this including actually interconnecting and making it work?
This first phase part here where fire and library are involved and town hall and, actually, and D P W would be live. We would be connecting live. It would cover live connection and then the additional cost of, you know, the monthly cost would be the service involved to get internet, which would be typical anyway.
But have you done the analysis of that? Have you gotten the cost for what it's gonna cost, the costs of what it's gonna cost?
Uh, no.
To be on the service?
No, that has to, that has to be done by an engineer when we get to that point of what the cost would be or survey, I'm not sure how it's termed, but I did talk today with Charter, who is our current provider, and to see what their cost would be, and he, he gave me an estimate of, you know, twelve hundred dollars a month for internet access. Now, that's collectively, because right now, every location pays for internet separately, and it's roughly about fifteen hundred dollars a month if you add them up together. So if we have one centralized network that has one pipeline coming in with enough broadband, then that's roughly the estimated cost right now.
And when is this grant due in?
April twelfth.
Guess that's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Would that be like the way to go about doing this as a town is to apply for the municipal fiber grant program? I mean, is there really, when I, the beginning, there's different ways to go about procuring the system, but I mean, for a town of Southbridge, it would be going through this program, right?
Could we go through this program or it's gonna come out of our capital or free cash or anything like that?
Right, right. Um, because like we're totally behind when it comes to fiber, so I, I think there's a real need for it. And I mean, if this is the way to do it, it's only gonna get more expensive. And I'm a big proponent of cable in town, and I think if you were able to do this, you know, Charter might be interested in saying, hey, there's this much of the town is already now fiber. Maybe someday, just maybe they would, you know, lay some new lines, but.
And the build, the build is gonna include the line that's gonna go by the new fire station. It's just gonna be the new network equipment that would be within the station network, we build into the specs of the I T equipment. For that. So that would essentially get that line as well.
Also, it will, right now, we only have one connection coming in. We have no redundancy whatsoever. And as we see with like the D P W, when they had the server failure, that we fortunately already had backups where we can bring them online fairly quickly. But if a line went down, we would be in the dark. With the fiber network and the new fire station, the proposed idea is to have a secondary line on that end to like a backbone that would fire up if something went down here. We would have that as a redundancy so that we didn't lose services.
Makes sense. I just think that if we delay this any longer, and you know, if there's the opportunity now as the deadline, I think we should probably consider recommending it to council, but that's just my opinion.
Well, I mean, I, I agree. It's just that I'm just confused on how you're connected to each other, but how do you connect out, outwards if there's no fiber coming in? But I'm not really an expert on that.
It does come in, because when I was working for the school system years ago, they did have fiber when the new school was built. And, and I used to take from Southbridge Television, the last night's meeting, which was forty gigabytes, and it would upload with the extremely fast fiber speeds that the middle high school had in twenty minutes flat. And Will could tell you that if I tried to upload it here, it would shut the whole building down at the time. So I mean, the fiber does come from outside. It, it's just that, he's right.
Connected throughout town.
This isn't like, this is building it so that we can connect it to a company that will provide it, like Charter does.
Yes.
They just don't provide it to, to personal, you know, customers at home because there is no fiber. But if the businesses lay the fiber, if the business of the Town of Southbridge lays the fiber, we can connect to it and get it. And then we will be in an intraloop that should be connected with the schools too, right? I mean, in theory.
At some, at some, this.
They're very close.
They're close and we can do future bills, yes.
Right, so, um, no, no, that you provide the infrastructure and you can get the fiber.
Question?
Yes?
So I'm just looking, you know, we only just got this, so that's why, sorry, I'm scrutinizing here, trying to make sense of all the numbers so that anybody who's watching can understand. So I'm still trying to figure out the money side of this here. Total grant. The grant is.
The, is that a question?
Yeah, the grant is.
The grant is two fifty, yes.
The grant is two fifty. Because I'm, I'm just looking at the grant funding summary proposal side of things. Should I, is that, isn't that where I should be looking technically?
Yep.
Okay, and I'm, I see three hundred and, really small print, thirteen, two sixty-six, eligible grant capex, whatever. And below that, it's got this hundred thousand dollar department funds.
Those are the two ARPA requests from fire and library.
Right, so you're gonna request that they have additional two hundred.
They've been.
They've already been.
They've been already.
They've already requested.
It's already.
Oh, okay, so that's why we're breaking it down. All right, I just wanted to make sure.
And the thing is too, just if I may, we, I think we've talked about this before. That hundred thousand that we have allocated to the library, if we don't obligate it by December thirtieth, we can't spend it. So because of the definition of obligation under the federal guidelines of the ARPA.
Was that twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five?
You, to, no. You have to, when, we've allocated monies, right? But our auditors have instructed us that.
Obligated.
Obligated, in the eyes of the federal government, means that council says, oh, we obligated a hundred thousand, that's fine, but that's not truly obligated by the federal guidelines. The federal guidelines of obligated is that you have a contract.
Good.
So anything that we have allocated to ARPA, we have to make sure we have contracts. So we're taking a look now at some of those other costs, like we had lights down at Henry Street for the Little League field, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If we're not gonna have a contract, or we don't know we're gonna have a contract pretty soon, then we have to rethink about what we're doing with all this money to obligate them.
Makes sense, understood.
You can spend them through till twenty-six then.
Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Twenty-six, but you have to have contracts in place and truly obligate them.
Which is your question?
Sorry, no, so just, and just one more question on numbers. So the realistic, so the realistic out-of-pocket expense or what you're technically looking for at some point when the council match, when the council agrees to this, is the sixty-four thousand?
That's.
Is that the phase one original?
That's the, what would be allocated from the ARPA funds.
Even the sixty-four?
The sixty-four is coming out of the two hundred thousand combined there.
Oh, okay.
So that it, instead of a five percent match, it actually looks like a twenty percent match.
Right, right, okay.
Um, and then that would leave us a remainder of that ARPA funds, but it also obligates the federal requirement to.
Right.
Take that.
Okay.
Gotcha.
All right, yeah, because the first time you went through it, it was kind of like, there's a lot of numbers. I didn't even see where they were, so now that I see where they are, I'm trying to, okay.
Okay.
I guess so.
All right, well. All right, seeing no further questions, all those in favor. Opposed, unanimous, all present. Thank you very much. Agenda number four is review and discuss the recommendation of the Board of Assessors to enter into an agreement with Real Estate Research Consultants of North Andover, Mass. for personal property recertification appraisal services in the amount not to exceed thirty-four thousand dollars and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend it to the Town Council for.
So I've, Will and Jasmine come up? Jasmine can come up too. Jasmine's been working with Will on this. So we were fortunate, I think, by bringing Will back when we did, because we were unaware through all the transitions that we had to go out for the R F P for our revaluation services. So the first thing that Will did when he came back, along with a multiple of other things, was work with Jasmine to come up with the R F P for the revaluation services. So I'll let Will explain it, because, but I can't thank Will and Jasmine enough for all the work that they did in getting this ready to get to this point, because otherwise, if we had not done it when we did, we would have been really behind what we're supposed to do. So he'll talk about what those two proposals are and the funding and then any questions.
All right.
Great, it's good to be back here. There are Will, Jasmine, Cinches here. So the next two agenda items are related, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about the whole process, and then we'll talk specifically about this item, this agenda item, and then when you're ready, you can move to the next one. But there's a lot of related things. As most of you probably know, the state mandates that you do a revaluation every five years. They changed that. It used to be every three years till, to about two thousand sixteen. And, but, so they, the, I think it was the Municipal Relief Act changed that. And it's, from this point of view, it's very good, because the money we're having to spend now every five years, we used to have to spend every three years. And in fact, I looked at the contracts when I was doing all of this, they were actually considerably higher on the every three years program. So for both of these programs here, the funding is already mostly in place. It start, when I first started, it was already done this way, but I made sure I continued it. Where we appropriated approximately a third of the cost every year for the whole program. And there's also interim year cost in the middle years, which are far less, but we appropriated every year, so we'd have a revolving fund. So instead of getting a big hit in the three years, or now in the five years, the money just kind of continued. We would make an appropriation every year, and it was steady, but a lot less than it would be in any given year. So currently, we have most of the funding in place for these two items. When I say mostly, we're about ten thousand dollars short on the total of the two, but in this year's budget, once we put the budget in, assuming you all appropriate the budget item, which you have done for all of the last years, it'll replenish in July and it'll be plenty of money to complete the project. So there's no additional funding other than the normal budget items. One note that I just want to mention, so we would always ask for in the budget thirty-five thousand dollars under articles for the revaluation projects, for the annual interim, interim year updates, as well as the big revaluation every five years. For some reason, last year, it wasn't put into the budget, that thirty-five thousand dollars. So that's the reason why we're, we have, we're mostly, if, if that had been, we would be fully funded. This way here, we're gonna have to wait for a little part of it to complete, and the vendors have no issues with this. But once the new budget comes into place in July. So again, it's mo- it's mostly funded according to plan. So what revaluation does is, every year, every city in town has to update all of their property values to full and fair cash value. We do this every single year, but in revaluation year, the state comes in and they kind of audit it in some very, very strenuous ways and with some real detailed requirements. For example, in the revaluation year, we have to do a field review of at least twenty-five percent of the properties, so we need a vendor to do that. We have to come up with all kinds of new building, building, land, income schedules for all of our commercial and residential properties, which we need a lot of assistance with. That's, that's in general. Specifically now, getting to the personal property one, this agenda item. The package that I prepared for you has five things in them. The first page is a memo explanation of what it is, which I'll kind of review real quick as we go through it. Secondly, there's the price proposal from the winning, the winning proposal. Third, there's the non-price proposal, which tells what they're going to do. Fourth is the R F P, which tells them what we want them to do, and then fifth is the agreement. Most of this is online with what I submitted in two thousand and twenty and sixteen with just updates to what the requirements are from the state. So getting back to specifically to this agenda item for personal property. Personal property, there are two kinds of property. This one here deals with personal property, the other deals with the real property. The other is the real estate. Personal property is all of the business equipment of all of the businesses in town, okay? We have about four hundred and fifty accounts. In this revaluation here, the winning proposal was from a company called Real Estate Research Corporation, R R C, and you'll see it on page two, but in the reval year, it's gonna be thirty-four thousand dollars. And then in the second and third year, it goes down to seventeen thousand four hundred and seventeen thousand eight hundred. And in year four and five, they're option years by the town, which we can continue them for those two years at seventeen thousand eight hundred. So in, in the year that we're doing this revaluation, they're gonna list and value all four hundred and fifty of our personal property accounts with business accounts. They're gonna go out there, knock on the door, go into those businesses, go into those businesses and physically value inventory and value their equipment. They're also gonna do appraisals on our three, on our three utility companies, which have, also happen to be our largest taxpayers and the largest contributors of new growth. The appraisals are now, it's a new methodology that is mandated by the Department of Revenue. Uses, uses a technique called fifty-fifty, book value to, book to something, I forget the term. But, so they're gonna actually go physically do appraisals of National Grid, Mass Electric, and the other one escapes me, but. So that comes to the total of the thirty-four thousand dollars. Let me see. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Well, thank you for the explanation. Certainly thorough, makes sense to me. Does anybody have any questions?
My, my question is, the first year is for the five-year appraisal, and, but why do we need them for the following years? They're doing this every five years. Why, why subsequent years?
So again, what the Department of Revenue mandates, the full revaluation every year, they require the same additional work each year, but they don't require, they don't require us to go out to every account, every, in the personal property side every year. What we do in the second through fifth year in the personal property side is, we do about four hundred new and existing accounts. So over the five-year period, again, we visit, we visited, we visit about a quarter of that each year in the interim years. But the values all change every year, and we go out, list all the new accounts, get rid of the old ones. And again, they, they go to about a hundred of them, which are the new accounts and some of the large accounts where we target, where you get the most bang for the buck.
What would happen if we didn't do this?
If we didn't do this, the Department of Revenue wouldn't certify our values. So as a little part of this, as Town Manager said, I came in at about, right, right before February first. I put this R F P together, I sent it out there onto, what is it, the?
Convies.
Convies, and we also advertised it where we have to. So it, we had a submission schedule of March fourth, which they came in. The Department of Revenue also has been calling to see, you know, how, how have you begun? We had to come up with a revaluation plan. Last week, I met with the Department of Revenue, and we set up a schedule that has a bunch of, and I think, I believe it's in here as well, a timetable for everything that has to happen. So over, this company here, by the way, because they were the only submitter, submission for this. They talked to me and they said, what's the schedule, what's going on? And I said, well, I have a subcommittee tonight, you know, just today. On March twenty-fifth, we begin, I'm sorry, March twenty-fifth is the full council meeting. Assuming that gets passed, they plan on starting on March twenty-sixth, because it's a really rigid timetable to get certified. Now, if we said, heck, whether we're not gonna do this, or we failed to do it, or we forgot to do it, or it didn't come out right, we would not get a tax rate, we won't be able to set, send any tax bills. This is mandatory. Again, with the Department of Revenue, and Jasmine was there in the meeting, there's rigid deadlines where we have to have every step of this along the way. So we're just working towards that.
Okay, well, you gotta do it, you gotta do it.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens.
Thank you. Mr. Canower, Will, nice to see you.
Pleasure.
Do we send out to all the businesses the personal property evaluation forms that they have to individually fill out or that they're requested in, as, as other communities do?
We do. So there are two kinds of forms we send. One is called a form of list, which we send to all the person, all the businesses that have personal property. They're required to submit that back to us by, I believe it's March first. And we use those as a basis, we use those more in the interim years to maintain their levels, because in this year, we're using that. That's what they're declaring, but we're also going out to look at it. It's particularly important when you're dealing with companies that may have personal property in different factories in town or in different businesses. Like, so the answer to your question is, we do, do mail those out. On the other side, on the next agenda item, we send out income and expense questionnaires to ask what they're getting for rents and all of that kind of thing. So, yeah, we do, we do do all of that.
Well, I'm just familiar with that in Charlton, because I'm familiar, Philly went out almost every year in Charlton as far as the paperwork goes. I've never saw anybody come to ask us up the business at the time, but I guess they could have come around when I wasn't there. And I just hope that it's equal, I, I get it, more bang for the buck because you go for it. It's easier to get a lot of money from one large place that you're inventorying than smaller places added up, but it just seems, I did read that in there. But it just seems, I did read that in there about what they said, that they're assessable, you know, they're identifying assessable items. And, you know, I think it should be equally spread and properly done and not just, not just target. Cause that, that just wouldn't seem quite right to target certain places versus all that are required to pay taxes.
That is a great question. So by targeting, I don't mean it, so what that really means is this. So the town of Southbridge, about, I think it was in approximately 2010, we passed a $1,000 exemption for value of personal property. Which meant if you had a business with less than the $1,000 worth of equipment, you don't pay any tax. Because if you did pay tax, what would you be paying? If you had $1,000 worth of value, you'd pay $15 a year. Four bills of about four bucks a piece, be stupid. So we passed that exemption to clean up those small accounts. But $1,000 to $3,000, if businesses are paying $45 a year. So does it make sense to pay somebody $100 or whatever it just comes out to, to go to those kind of accounts? Not really. So the targeting part of it is more that the ones of a certain level of equipment. You know, rather than a place where you know, you know, they're paying, you know, they only have $45 worth of tax a year. Again, it just doesn't make sense. So by targeting, that's kind of what I'm talking about.
I just, I pay small bill like that in Charlton. For a business and it seems like they want their money, so I don't know. Just think it should be equal, it should be equal. People should have to pay what they're supposed to pay.
Well, I'll be honest with you, this, a company like this tries to get us to go and do a lot more accounts every year. But budget, budgetary, budgeting, budget wise, do we really wanna pay, you know, pay for them to go up to these places?
Well, that being said, but you require, you put up, you send a sheet out to businesses to fill out and send back.
Everybody.
Honest, you know, answers, so to speak. So, and then you would bill them, I take it, whether you've visited them or not?
We do. And, yeah, the, the formal list is, I mean, if you have a, for example, a beauty parlor, there are norms, there are standards that we know you have for equipment. I mean, if you say you have zero, it's like, no, that isn't right. And, or if you, you know, we know you don't have $100,000 worth of hair dryers too, so. There are industry standards that you use.
Thank you.
All right. Seeing no more discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Agenda number five, review discussed the recommendation of the Board of Assessors to enter into an agreement with Vision Appraisal Technology of Hudson, Mass for real property recertification appraisal services in the amount of $61,800 for fiscal year 2025 and fixed per diem prices for appraisal assistance for interim years of FY 2026, FY 2027, and option years of FY 2028 and FY 2029, which should not exceed $6,000 a year and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend to the town council.
So, second.
Okay, and I, I feel like you explained most of us already, but it seems like this is the real estate side of the same process.
It is, it's very, very similar. On the real estate side, though, it's much more comprehensive because we have a lot more parcels. So in the, in the, in the revaluation year, they come in, they help us develop land schedules and building schedules based on the market. They have specific commercial, commercial appraisers who have real and high expertise in helping us determine rent levels, capitalization rates, which is really key to valuing commercial industrial and apartments. They help us get all of that. And in this, in this first year, they also look at approximately 25% of our properties in town. They go to see. So this is the big bang year. And then in the interim years, we use them per diem to help us out. In my, in my tenure, we usually needed them two or three days, just to help us, you know, go over the commercial income and expense questionnaires and so forth. I usually need them two or three days. In the future, you might, because we have somebody coming in who might not have my level of experience, they might need them a couple of additional days. That's why the probably not to exceed the $6,000. In the interim years, it's per diem, so it's what we need them for.
Makes sense. Does anybody have any additional questions? Council record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. So when they come in and evaluate properties in town, it seems like sometimes they're a little low. I'll give you an example. Knight Chevrolet was assessed at, I think, $400,000. And we ended up paying, what was it, Jack, about 1.4? We had a professional assessor come in. So that was quite, quite a ways off. So I don't quite understand why they would, if they're the ones that assessed it at such a low value, what's their reasoning for that? And then I look at properties and I see somebody with a three-decker, their, their property sometimes can be assessed lower than my single family. So I'm not quite sure what, what criteria they use, but it just seems to be off, a little off sometimes.
Okay, so the way values work on residential, single-family, two-family, three-family land and so forth, is you assess them as a, we, same thing applies, the data applies for everything, but the, the approach you use to value is slightly different. So for the one, two, and three families, they're based on the sales approach. And the date of valuation is January, January 1 before the fiscal year begins. So for this revaluation, which is gonna be in effect from July 1, I'm sorry, July 1, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, the date of valuation is gonna be January 1, 2024, which just went by. And you're gonna use the sales that occurred in the calendar year before, which is in 2023. If you don't have enough sales in a particular class, because there are some classes you don't, single families and the ones I just mentioned usually aren't a problem. But there are some classes where you don't have enough sales. The Department of Revenue mandates that we use two years of sales. So the sales you may use would be 2023, and if you have to bring in another year, 2022. So there's already a several-year time lag. Having said that, what you have to value, you have to value individual median assessment to sales ratio. In other words, an assessment to sales ratio is if a property sold for $100,000 and we had it assessed at $95,000, that's a 95% assessment to sales ratio. The Department of Revenue, that's what the Department of Revenue wants you to commit at. Because you don't wanna be over that 100%. So you're a little below to begin with, and in a rising market, it falls even further behind. All one, two, and three-family properties use that, that primary method of, of value. When it comes to, and, and they're correct. So in different years, a three-family might become very, very hot and people bid them up. And, and where a single-family might not have gone up at the high, that kind of rate. But single families have a lot more stability. When nobody wants to be a landlord anymore, because I've seen it happen many times over the years, those three families, four families, five families plummet in value. And the, and the single families may go down, but not quite as much. So that partially explains what you said. We have to do them all based on that assessment to sales ratio. When it comes to income properties like apartments and industrial places, in addition to what I just said, you also have to use the income approach. What rents are, what expenses are, and what a capitalization rate is. The capitalization rate, as interest rates fall, as interest rates fall, investors and people demand less money for, less percentage, less return for the money a month they have invested. So I'll give you an example of that. If a property, or if a property collects $100,000 a year in rent, right? And 50% of that is expenses, so they net $50,000 a month, a year in rent. If you have a 10% capitalization rate, you divide that $50,000 net income by 10%, that means that property is worth $500,000. But if interest rates start falling and people, people want, still wanna buy these things, no matter how low the return is, if that rate, if that capitalization rate goes down, it still has the same $50,000 income, but divided by 5%, it's, it's worth double. That's how those are valued. Not just here, by appraisers, by everybody, that's how the real estate market works. To answer your question about the Knight Chevrolet, we have to value that based on what would that type of property rent for? Same methods. And you tell me, I mean, is, is somebody beating down the door to start auto repair places or car dealerships? Probably not. So that's why our methodology has a lower rental. And then when they go to sell it though, they have a fee appraiser doing a different type of evaluation. And that's why you have to pay more. It's, and that's just a real simplistic approach. Every property is different. I don't know if that property, the amount you said on Knight Chevrolet included, they had a couple of other properties next door. I don't know if that included those as well. It may have.
I mean, if you've seen rent recently, it's, it's pretty high.
Yep, and.
$2,000 for a two-bedroom apartment is ridiculous. So if that's taken into account, that's a lot more than $50,000 a year.
I just use that as a rough example, something easy, think, easy numbers to work with. But rents are taken into consideration and I would hazard a guess landlords are not gonna be happy with the next revaluation.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I was just thinking is that if you're, if, what you're saying from 23, or 22 even, but 23 mostly, multifamilies were big sellers in the last year or two.
Exactly.
At, at good, huge monies, so. And the rents are, yeah. So let's hope somebody else takes a hit.
Somebody pays one way or the other, that's really what happens.
Okay, well, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Thank you very much to both of you.
One question, who, you said they go out to 25% of the properties.
Yeah.
For visit, for an actual, you know, where do they get the, how do they base their decision on those 25%? And they aren't taking the top 25, I hope?
No, from our recommendation. So be careful when you ask a question, because I give you a long, I give you an, a complete answer.
I'd like a complete answer.
So, so two things about that. So the Department of Revenue in their mandate, in their mandates, they require us to go to every property at least once a ten, once every 10 years. So 6,000 residential, 6,000 real estate parcels, we go to 600 of those every year. And when the DOR comes in, they wanna see the numbers, they ask for printouts to show when we went to each particular one and they, you know, that, that's one of the things they check on us. So that 25%, what we do is we target various areas of town to show, what's the word? Homage, homogene, homogenous, it's an offshoot of that word. To show that if your methodology near is standardized. So that properties on Charlton Street will be not similar, but will be evaluated separately than properties on Denison Hill, which, so we pick streets on various parts of town to demonstrate a sampling, how the, the data is accurate.
So it's a sampling?
A sampling, but 25% of the town sampling.
Right, okay. A variety.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Sorry, just.
Moving on to agenda number six, review discussed town of Southbridge FY 25 benefit offerings. There's no motion here.
No, so. Nora is here, so we're gonna talk about what our benefit offerings are, any changes? And then the motion is to allow us to sign related paperwork.
So if I may clarify, the motions will pop later in the.
Sure.
Other motions, this is just a summary of what we're presenting this year.
Fantastic.
Okay. So first thing, I just wanted to give some background on the strategy and why we're offering different things this year in our benefit package. In FY 23, we had 240 total hires and 43% of that was town new hires or hiring for vacancies. And in FY 24, we had 195 total hires and 25% of that was of the town. So we have a pretty high turnover rate. So in order to come up with some strategies on how to combat that, we have looked into enhancing our benefit offerings. So this year, we included for active employees, a high deductible, low premium, monthly premium plan. And we're also offering a package from Aflac for additional benefits like cancer protection program and accidental program and whole life policy and short-term disability. So that's just kind of the gist of it.
Is there, can they opt out of these things or they're just offering, okay?
Yeah, so these are just our offerings, the employees.
So you're providing some additional benefits to employees can select?
Absolutely.
So, there you go, there's the incentive anyway that you're trying to add.
And really, too, we had, you know, some penalties because we didn't offer a certain type of plan.
Yep, I'll get into that.
So that's why we're, we have looked at that as well. And the insurance advisory committee was on board for these reviews, so that was chaired by Nora. So that whole committee has reviewed it. And this is why we're here this evening to go forward.
Okay. Well, if that's what you're saying, then I, I feel inclined to, but you know, introduce agenda number seven, so the committee can make recommendations on the specific parts.
Yeah.
That you're talking about. So agenda number seven is review discuss medics' plan rate change due to hearing aid rider benefit increase. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council.
All right, so one of the things that some of the retirees came to me and our retiree representative from the IAC came to me for was increasing our hearing aid rider from $1,500 to $5,000. So I went and asked for a few quotes from Maya to see if we can do a 2,000, 3,000, and 5,000. We found that the 5,000 proposal was the most advantageous. And there will be no change to the medics' plan, other than the increase of the hearing aid benefit.
Okay. No? Okay.
Well, I just wanted to know, what is the cost of the town?
Okay, so the total rates increase is .17 increase in the premium. So it is about a dollar increase in total. So, you know, but that's in total, that doesn't count the town versus the employee.
All right.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Number eight is review discuss FY 25 medical plan rates. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council.
So.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Just a friendly amendment that, oh, recommend the town council and allow town manager to sign.
Sign all related documents?
Oh, like, cause I have to sign that, so.
You're, okay, okay.
As long as it's up on council's agenda properly.
As, sign all related documents.
Yeah, because it's.
I just wanna make sure I add that because I have to sign off on it, I just want authority to sign off.
Okay, um, is there any more to add?
No, that was it, I just wanted to.
Uh, that's understood. Okay.
Okay, so for this, like I said, we are adding a new high deductible, low premium plan. And like the town manager said, we have been penalized for not offering a, an affordable healthcare plan to some of our employees. And this will help us avoid those penalties going forward. That doesn't mean that we're not going to see some of those bills, because they're just catching up. We lost, we saw the last one for 2021. This year, the rates for health insurance went up 6.41% for the HMO, New England plan and the PPO plan. For the HMO Select Plan, it went up 2.98%. There is no change in the dental premium rates and no change in vision.
Okay.
All right, I just wanna say too, we're very fortunate, because we were told that these rates were probably gonna be in a 10 to 12% range. So we're very fortunate that we got a rate that was pretty favorable.
Ms. Comacy, then.
Yeah, well, it's funny, I, I look at this. Yeah, well, it's funny, I look at this, I think having a high deduct, or a deductible of some sorts is, is a great, or bigger than three hundred dollars anyway, is, is more industry standard all around for business as it goes. I mean, I guess, I just remember when we would have people complaining, or they just did not want change. They wanted everything free, they wanted their little doctor visit costs, you know, copays, and they didn't want any kind of deductible. And I don't care how much we explained, that it could make the difference between your payment, and they just didn't want to hear it. It was very interesting back then. So I think it's great that there is this. Your offer, so there's, not worried about, like, nobody's going to, it's a choice. They can still pay the high thing.
Correct.
But it's a choice. Yeah, so I think before, we were trying to make those changes and people just did not want changes. It wasn't a choice, it was a, this is before your time.
I probably, I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
I know we're definitely behind on the April for offering a benefit like this.
Right.
And just us offering, we don't, no one has to sign up for this.
Right.
But just us offering this plan will prevent us from getting those, um, um.
The penalties for not offering something that's, is more.
Correct.
Average, affordable, right? Because not everybody has a lot of expenses, so they don't need deductible, yeah. Or you don't end up having to do it.
I think the school, I think the school was very much in favor of this too, because they have a, a lot of newer employees that perhaps don't use the medical system as much and they're paying for a cheaper rate. So just give them the opportunity to have that. A younger person has less medical than an older.
Sure.
Yes, I'm not being ageist, but, you know, so.
Right, you have to weigh it.
Right, you know, a healthy, younger individual.
How much am I saving a year?
Yeah, I mean, they.
I mean, or month, rather, huh?
Right, and they look at that and that, you know, and that's, that was one of the things the school is looking forward to that might be more attractive for younger professionals to come into the fold.
I mean, two's still reasonable, a lot of them are three to five, and so. That's a good option.
It is a credit to everybody that worked on it, you know, and Michelle has her thoughts on some of the medical things too, because she comes from a background that she was very involved in the health, selection committee up in the Berkshires, I guess it was, so.
No, that's good, I just remember when we, it was just weird, tried to offer, of course, again, it was a change, it wasn't an offering. So it was going to be that way, and they, nobody wanted this, they just couldn't see their way around it.
And just to clarify, it is a, well, even if it's not a change and we are just offering an additional, we still have to go to these unions and say, hey, we're, we're making this change.
Right, you know what I'm talking about, in some way, yeah, speaking of the unions.
Yep.
Well, I, I wasn't saying anything directly, I was just, yeah, that was big. Yeah, so anyway, okay, thanks, yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, Shania?
I think too is the offering of the dental and the vision plan doesn't cost the town anything. As employee paid not, no benefit, it's a benefit that is paid by the employee, not the town.
Correct.
Same thing with the Aflac and that, that's an offering that is paid for by the employee and not by the town. And the other thing, if you recall, after the, we got change of council in July, I think it was sixty-five thousand dollar child, penalty charge, because we didn't have that second offering. And we were able to negotiate that price down from the higher penalty, but it was, direct result of not having the affordable insurance offering.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, all was in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Finally, agenda number nine, review discuss proposal from Aflac for additional benefit offerings to active employees and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork. Entertain a motion to recommend to town council.
Second.
Mr. Manager?
Uh, this is just another additional benefit, and I'll let Nora explain it to you, but, you know, obviously, people like, we're trying to recruit, other businesses have short-term disability and that. We don't have those type of programs, so this is just an opportunity for us to provide additional coverage for certain people that wish for it at no cost to the town. It's employee-paid, it's not town-paid, there's no seventy-third pledge, if the employee wants it, we're just the purveyor of his documentation and get him onboarded and.
And this is the one where it's the accidental and all the other things you were talking about in the beginning? Always a great thing to offer.
Whole life, you know, so, things that people want that we don't pay them.
Right, you never think you need it, but it should be definitely offered, because in the end, you probably might.
Was this the only offering? Aflac, was that the only company?
So just to give you a little bit of background, we actually went out for quotes to enhance our current, um, basic life insurance policies. And we didn't receive any favorable proposals. So, but Aflac came back and said, I can't do this for you, but here are some other benefits that we think we can provide for you. So we'll keep our basic life and optional term life with our current vendor, which is Boston Mutual. On top of that, we will hopefully offer whole term with Aflac and short-term disability. And we will, we are continuing to look into more benefits or enhancing our current benefits. So this is not the last and final proposal for.
All right, but to, just to make sure I'm clear, so you went out for proposals with our, with the existing company? And Aflac came, how did Aflac get involved?
We went out and asked.
You went.
Different vendors.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
But Aflac was the only one really offering this type of comprehensive package for options? I think they should pay us every time somebody takes advantage of it, just saying, what are we getting for it?
We're keeping our employees.
Keeping our employees, yes, yes.
That's the goal.
All right, I've, I've worked at a place that had Aflac before, and there was some, for some reason, it didn't work out. And a lot of employees started off taking the Aflac and then dropping out of it, and finally, the company just got rid of it. Because I, I'm trying to remember, I think there was a problem with you have to stay, you have to be in Aflac for a certain amount of time before you're going to get any benefits. I'm not absolutely one hundred percent sure on that, but I know that some employees weren't too happy because Aflac wouldn't pay them, because they weren't in it long enough.
So that is most likely the short-term or the long-term disability. And in the package, you will see that there is a waiting period. So you do have to, even though you're paying for the benefit, you have to wait, there's different terms. So there is the one to fourteen, the fourteen to whatever. You have to wait that amount before Aflac can actually pay you that benefit, which is standard.
And you mean fourteen months?
Days.
Days, right.
Yeah.
Well, I think it was longer than that, but, okay. I mean, if it's not going to cost the town any, anything, why do we even have to be involved?
Just a benefit to give.
So it's just a, we're just going to be handling the paperwork on it, and that's it?
Yes, um, so.
I mean, they could do this on their own, right? They wanted to.
They could, they could do it on their own, but, um, you know, we want to, we want to offer our employees a comprehensive benefit package, and that's why we want to do this for them.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Agenda item number ten, adjournment.
Second.
All was in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Uh, eight, seven fifty-nine.